Good evening, the meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorsky?
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Ms. Antelis. Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Poy.
Here.
Mr. Presiosso.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted January 11th, 2013, 1 at all schools, 2 the Home News Tribune, 3 Cranberry Press, and 4 filed with the Clerk of the municipality. At this time, we will have reports from our student board members, or a member.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The events that will take place this month are: The DECA Regional Conference Meeting was on January 8th. There is a winter band concert tonight that started at 6:00. There will be a half-day on January 18th due to staff in service, and school will be closed on January 21st because of Martin Luther King Junior Day. And college planning night for seniors is January 30th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Joe Castelluccio, 20 Ashley Court, Monroe Township. Oops, sorry about that. See, instead of giving me the bell, they gave me the, they gave me the, I did say turn, turn cell phones off, anyway, apologize for that. I, I did want to just congratulate the new members. I wasn't here last time when the new members came in, so I want to congratulate Mr. Poy and Anthony and the others for their, welcome their service. But I, I did want to say that it's very important to remember who elected you. And it's the township residents that elected you, the taxpayers pay, pay your salaries, they want you to do the right thing for them. Spend what we have to spend on, not what we'd like to spend on. Keep the taxes low, that's the goal. Make sure you absolutely maintain and increase the education for the children when it's necessary, but don't just spend for the sake of spending. And I would hope that that would be the pledge that you would all make, those are newly elected ones and certainly the ones that have been on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Robert Roche, 18 Muirfield Boulevard, Monroe. On page 11, Board Action Item Number G. It looks like you're instituting a new club at the high school? And I would like to know whether that, what is, what the cost of that is to the, for the board?
At this time, there is no cost to implement that, that, that new club.
No cost at what time? This time, for this year?
There is no cost this year to the, to the board?
Is this a trial-type of program?
Um, it, it was... Dr. Hamilton, do you want to talk, take this?
Yeah, this went through the committee process, and essentially what happens is when teachers or students have an activity or a club that they are interested in, just seeing if there's enough interest in, they volunteer for a year to see how it goes. And if it goes well, if it's, if it's well-received by students, then there could be a recommendation next year to implement the program or not.
And at that time...
Teachers are always voluntary.
And next, next year, will there not be a cost, or will there be a cost?
There will be a cost for whatever stipend the association has negotiated or will negotiate on behalf of that activity.
Well, this is just a situation where, you know, if it is continued, I just think that the continual adding of more programs and more clubs is just, just beyond belief. My next question deals with H. The, I may have the wrong, but it was a sidebar agreement and...
It was H.
That's H.
Is that H?
Yes.
Can you explain what that agreement is?
Yes, that agreement revolves around clubs and activities that are already in place, but the association has requested that we revisit the stipends associated with those positions because the composition and scope of those duties have changed as a result of the district reconfiguration. So, the inclusion of 6th grade students at the middle school, for example, has increased the number of performances, the number of auditions, and the amount of time that teachers are being asked to put into supervising those activities. So, the association, in conjunction with the board, have negotiated this sidebar agreement. The sidebar agreement is essentially an agreement that has been reached after the negotiated agreement has been signed and...
And what is that agreement? How much is that going to cost?
Um, there are three different activities involved. One increases a stipend by probably $3,000 over the course of the year. The second activity refers to an hourly rate, it limits it up to 20 hours. And the third one, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I can look that up and get back to you on it.
So, that, that's 3,000 total? It's not 3,000 per, per individual who's monitoring or...
It, it, the answer is yes to both of those questions, but it's, it's in total, but for that particular club.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public?
Shell Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. In, in terms of stipends, stipends can be given to just about any employee in the district, is that correct? It's not, it's just, it's not just for teachers, is that correct?
Generally speaking, most often, however, the stipends are negotiated by the certificated, the association that represents the certificated staff people.
Okay.
There are very few exceptions.
Can you sort of just give a quick definition of what a stipend is?
A stipend is a calculated additional rate of compensation for duties that are above and beyond the ordinary teaching or supervisory duties.
Okay, and where is stipended in the budget? What would it be called as a budget item? Is it in salaries, is it a separate miscellaneous?
It's in salaries, is it not?
It is.
What is it exactly?
Personnel salaries.
Personal salary? Now, is there a way for the public to break down a salary and a stipend? So, in other words, if I came to the board office and asked for a list of all the stipends in the district, would I be able to get that?
I know if you came in and you said, Ken Hamilton's salary is $50,000, how much of that is his annual contractual salary and how much of that is stipend? That I know we could give you, but I don't know about the specificity you just described.
If you ask for a particular position's total compensation, we could easily give you a report of their regular compensation, as Dr. Hamilton explained, and the additional stipend would also show up in there. If you wanted stipends in aggregate, that would require some analytical work to go through the budget, determine what the stipends were, because the State of New Jersey Chart of Accounts does not designate a account nor a sub-account just for stipends. They want them charged to the individual's regular line item, such as high school teacher salaries, elementary teacher salaries.
So, somebody could essentially be making 50,000 or 75,000, let's say, as a regular salary, but somehow make 100 based on stipends? It's possible, conceivably?
Possible, I'll answer yes.
Okay, so what percentage of the budget, do you have a sense of that would be given out in stipends?
Fraction of 1%.
A fraction of 1% on a $86 million budget?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Tom Oats, 915 Nathaniel Street. With regard to under Board Action, Charlie C., what, what's the cost of the field trips? And, because we don't actually, obviously have that attached description of the field trips, I just wonder what the cost of those are and what is the description of the field trips?
Do you want to speak to that? That comes out of the curriculum office.
Nelson, I don't have, I'd have to look to see what the total is, I don't do mathematical calculations. We, we base it on trip requests that go through the schools, then to me, and then to transportation. Generally speaking, if they're internal field trips, so kids going to other schools within the district, we are able to use our own buses, so it's a minimal cost. Some of them are tied into the curricular programs at the high school, like the DECA that we, that the students are based on, those, some of them are national competitions. They also include sporting events, teams that go to different competitions, debate clubs, all of those. In aggregate, a lot of our field trips are paid by local school PTAs and PTOs because we, we, we cut back a number of years on our, ago on our field trips, for the sake of field trips, so tying into a nice, strong curricular reasoning for that. And so, it, it varies, but I could get you that information.
I was wondering, the list must be here, right? Because it's, it says it per the attached list, so I imagine the board members would have that list, correct?
So, we could do that research and get it for you.
Okay. Also, with regard to the public service, energy efficiency improvements, could you just elaborate a little on what that entails and what's the approximate cost of the, of our 20%?
PSENG?
Yes.
Yes. Our facilities director solicits different grants to help supplement the budget or offset costs that otherwise would be budgeted for. And in the past, we've had, this is relevant to your question, but we applied for a safety grant that was on the last meeting, I talked about that. That's where they were able to put those kiosks in all the school, we putting your license and make sure you're not an offender to come into the school building and, you know, secure that. The PSENG grant in particular deals with a grant that PSENG received from the federal government to come in and install energy-efficient lighting fixtures in the schools and school facilities. Had no upfront cost to the district, and there'll be, I believe, a 20% portion that's passed through in your monthly bills going forward, but the savings reaped from the reduced energy costs will more than outweigh that, and there's an estimate of $18,000 a year that that will save net on energy costs. So, it's a real win-win for, for the environment and for the school district and the budget.
Okay, so it's nothing to do with solar or anything?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to address Mr. Nelson's question on, I'm sorry. I just wanted to address the question on the field trips. We did, we, the board members are in possession of a supplemental document that just lists the, the various field trips, and there are three that have costs associated with them for roughly seven...
The total is $6,736.44, to get back to you on your question, but there's about 20 of them in that combination. The big one for the month was the DECA trip, which is a national conversation, which required chartered buses down in Cherry Hill.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to the agenda?
Good evening, Nelson 10, 4 Ashley Court. I'm sorry, Mr. Gorsky, I, I may have missed it. What's the recapture period on the PSENG?
The district's cost of the infrastructure is about 20%, and it's pushed forward in the monthly bill, including with an interest-free loan for, say, for that. So, over the next, you know, several months, there'll be an additional amount due for the lighting, but that will more than be offset by the reduced energy savings, and it will retrofit all of the schools and the, these other facilities with new energy-efficient lighting.
So, over the next several months, you're saying we'll recapture the, I mean, we'll be making $18,000?
On an annual basis, that's correct.
On an annual basis, okay.
And we've had this before many years ago, it's nice that they reintroduced it again.
Okay. And as far as the Board Action Items B, the staff professional development, I'd like to know what type of courses and the cost? And I have some other questions, so I'm just going to list the questions and then you folks can, can speak to them. As far as the police expense for the special events, I wanted to know what those events are and what the cost, what last year's cost was and what the projected cost is for this year? And I also wanted to know what the item I, what circus minimus was? And also, no, that's it, go ahead.
Let Mike take the police, because I know he's got that right at his fingertips.
Yes, the police item is on the Business Administrator Report, letter F, and it's, it's an annual professional appointment that's made, this is not new.
Right.
And it's approving the hourly use of Monroe Township's Police Department for special services, most of which are at our athletic events, football games, basketball games. We reimburse the township for the costs of the officer providing security at those games. I don't have an estimate of what that is on an annual basis, but, you know, if you press me, I would say probably in the vicinity of under $10,000, $15,000.
Are those the only two sporting events that require the Monroe Police?
It's the large volume from the public events. I recall signing off on bills for football, basketball. Doctor, do you think of any other events that we have police for?
I think that's it, and you mentioned the sporting events, the national, state or national competitions.
Yes, if we're hosting a state or national competition, we'll ask for their assistance also.
Okay, regarding circus minimus, that is an activity that Barclaybrook School has been putting on for several years, every year since I've been here, anyway, and it's essentially a cultural experience for students. That is generally funded through a grant from, through MEF. So, there's, there's essentially no cost to the board on that one.
Half of it is, half of it through the grant, half of it through general budget funding.
Okay, so half of it is through the grant and the other half is through the general funding, thank you.
And what's the cost of that? I'm sorry.
Do you look at it? The whole thing is $5,500, $2,000 if it comes, $2,000 if it comes from the grant, $3,500 is in the general budget. It's an interdisciplinary major unit that focuses in on the arts, I could show you standards and the educational resources that connect it. So, it's, it's right in line with our curriculum, and it deals primarily with the performing arts, language arts literacy, social studies, content integration.
And regarding professional development, it's a pretty lengthy list.
If you'd like to review it, you can opera it, but just to give you a, a quick summary, it identifies any professional development request that a teach, a staff member, not necessarily a teacher, has requested or has been directed to, to take, and there are probably about 50 such requests on this month's agenda item. Most of them have no cost. The other costs range from $92 to, the most expensive one is the ASCD Conference of 2,900. Some of these are contractual obligations, and I'll just give you a bird's eye view of what some of them are. Project Lead the Way, Conference for our Food Director Relative to USDA Food Conference, Principles of Professional Learning, but you can, you can opera this if you, if you like a detailed list of it.
Are all of those approved, or are some of them not allowed at times?
No, they're, before they get the agenda, get to the agenda, we've either decided which ones are appropriate based on the staff member and/or his or her assignment, or won't get approved until tonight.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? In regard to the agenda?
I think it's permissible, but I'd like to talk about the DECA trip. That was discussed as a field trip?
Yeah.
Okay. Joanne Cardone, Gravel Hill Spotswood Road. I happen to have been at the DECA competition last Tuesday at Middlesex County College, and I'm proud to say that we had 52, I think it was 52 finalists, so 41% of our students that attended the competition are going to be, going to Cherry Hill the end of February. So, our students did a wonderful job, as usual, and I hope the board will continue to cover the expenses for these trips, because DECA is an excellent group for the students who are pursuing careers in business, marketing, entertainment, sports marketing, the courses which our school now offers. So, I just thought it would be a good thing for the public to know that our students do excel, and we had 29 of the 52 get overall ranks, so we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, before we go to number seven, I just want to remind all the board members that if you have not signed your acknowledgment of receipt for your Code of Ethics, to please do so and either hand them to Mr. Gorsky or to Joyce this evening. You, and you, and Joyce has extras if we need them, okay. The revised public meeting schedule, the meeting schedule has been revised due to a change in the date that state aid numbers will be released. After they changed their dates, we had to change the dates on our calendar, so I need a motion and a second to approve that.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Kaufman, are there any comments or questions? Then we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
This is on the, moving the... Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Presiosso.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, agenda item passes.
Thank you, and now we will go to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hamilton?
Thank you, good evening all. Before I get into the enrollment report and et cetera, I just want to share with the board and members of the public that our administrative body will be going through a pretty intense training next week with Board Council regarding our obligation to implement the new tenure reform laws. You've also heard me speak in reference to an analysis I had asked the Monroe Township Police Department to do in conjunction with our security personnel. They have completed their assessment and will be providing me with their recommendations. We're actually scheduled to meet tomorrow, and I'll be sharing them with you shortly thereafter. Also, on February 14th, it has been officially designated as Monroe Cares Day. This was an idea that kind of spearheaded as a result of trying to unify our efforts to raise funds for Hurricane Sandy relief. We did not want to have every school doing something different, so we came up with the idea of doing one big day for Monroe Cares. I've asked the mayor to prepare a proclamation declaring February 14th as Monroe Cares Day, and we'll be giving you more information about that regarding what those activities will entail, but we will engage the entire community in an effort to raise funds to provide relief for those families most affected by Hurricane Sandy. Moving on to the Superintendent's full report, the enrollment report is enclosed for the month of showing the difference between our November and December enrollment and the out-of-school placements, along with those students who are currently on homebound instruction. Our fire drills and safety drills are listed in your agenda as well. Moving on to the personnel items, Madam Board President and members of the public, it is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools that personnel items A through T be approved by roll call vote.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, second by Mr. Tesler. Are there any comments or questions for the Superintendent? Mr. Poy?
I just like some information about a couple of items.
Okay.
Item Q, some of the bus drivers, there's quite a list there, they're getting additional time, they're being approved for additional time. I'd appreciate an explanation as to why that was necessary.
Sure, there's several reasons for that. One is, we've been getting quite a few complaints on some of our routes that are currently being handled by subcontractors, so some of this will replace those, those runs. Other runs would include just increasing the load to cover some of the absentee rates that we have in amongst our bus drivers. And there was a third, Mike, do you remember what the third category was?
I think the absentee part was, was the big one.
Okay.
We found our staff absent more than we had liked, and that usually leads to a dispatcher or the director driving in certain instances, which leaves the telephone unmanned and other problems in the office. So, this will ensure adequate driving staff and someone to field the calls that may come in from parents.
And item R, there's a person being approved as an IAQ Coordinator. I did find out that that's an internal air quality coordinator. I'd like more information about what that person does, because I understand that each building has one.
Yes.
An indoor air quality.
Yes.
I said internal is indoor, you're right.
Indoor air quality coordinator.
Right.
Dr. Hamilton?
Yes, these, these are members of the teaching staff, and their responsibilities are to help filter any concerns raised by staff relative to air quality in the building, and they act as a liaison between the board, the administration, and the teaching body. So, they are given up to 10 hours a month. Most often, they, they don't actualize that much, because in most instances, we don't have any issues, but if there are issues, the protocol is for teachers or staff members to go to the IAQ person to register any concerns they have, and then that person filters them to the appropriate administrators.
Is there a reason why they're going to a member of the staff as opposed to the building principal for that report?
There's some history associated with that that goes back some time. Jeff, you want to speak to that?
It's a comprehensive, it's called Tools for Schools. It's a, it's a program that, that helps facilitate the indoor air quality in the schools because there have been, there was some history about over 10 years ago, and that protocol was put in place as a communication method to, to Jerry Tagg and his team, and it's been a very productive partnership, and the tool, which I could point you in the right direction to get the extent of the work that's being done, I believe is very beneficial to the entire school community, but it's hard to get into and explain to you right now.
And I believe those people have been trained in the air...
Yes, they have, yeah.
...air quality.
The reason it caught my attention was, one, I didn't know what an IAQ Coordinator was, so I appreciate that information, but also, when I looked at the amount of hours per month and the rate of pay, it calculates out that if, if each building did go up to the 10 hours per month for every month of the school year, even though you say that doesn't happen, but if they did, that would, that would eat up almost $36,000 of budget money, which seemed like an awful lot of money that we are providing, even though it's a maximum and likely not being spent, but it seemed like an awful lot of money for, for that particular activity. And I was wondering, when does the person do this, that they need to have the extra compensation?
Those hours, again, any additional compensation, those hours are done outside of the structure of their contractual day. Since I have been here, I have not known of a single instance where anyone has, where we've had a situation where every IAQ has exhausted their 10 hours, and it is also a contractual negotiated stipended position.
I think this goes back to like 2001, if I believe, Dr. Gorman?
Early, yeah. It was based off of the high school.
Yeah. Right. Are any other questions, Mr. Poy?
No, I believe that's it, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? Mr. Tesler?
Yeah, just a question on S, the, the one at the bottom. Could you just explain the new position and why that needs to be created?
S, like Sam?
S isn't Sam.
Yes.
The very last one.
Oh, that is a one-on-one.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll have a roll call, Mr. Gorsky?
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Uh, yes, except for item R. No.
So noted. Mr. Preziosso.
Yes, except for item R.
So noted. Mr. Tesler?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through T passes.
Moving on to board action item, it is recommended, Madam Board President and members of the board, that board action items A through H be approved by roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Masters. Any comments or questions on the board action items? Seeing none, do you have?
I have need for information.
Were you going to? Okay.
Okay. Uh, and item E, that deals with the student suspension report, I realize that that information is confidential, but when I reviewed it, I saw that there was a student suspended for theft, there were also some students suspended for vandalism, and a student suspended for possession of drugs and drug paraphernalia. And I think it would be to the benefit of all members of the board, as well as the public, to know whether or not, in the cases of theft and drug possession, is a report filed with the police, and in the case of vandalism, is the cost of repair or damages paid for by the parents.
Um, the short answer to that is yes, but it is also outlined in the high school student code of conduct manual and in the board policies relative to how those protocols are handled. So if at any time you want to cross-reference that with the suspension reports, that information is there. But yes, if a youngster is suspended for drugs, if they're suspended for suspicion of use or possession, they're required to have a drug test before they're admitted back, and it is reported to the police. If they are, if they vandalize the building or board property, parents are expected to make retribution.
Thank you.
Restitution.
Mr. Preziosso?
Item B, is that also for the administration, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, is that, give them a higher pay scale once they complete their development?
Uh, in this instance, no.
In some instances, it does start.
If it speaks to tuition reimbursement, if an administrator is going to acquire an advanced degree above what they currently have, then, or a teacher for that matter, then there is additional compensation associated with that.
Mr. Poy?
Yes, I do have one additional comment about item B. It was something that I learned today, and I think it's important for the public to know this. In many districts, when a teacher requests to go on a one- or two-day workshop, professional development, whether it's a seminar, anything of that nature, it is often the expense of that, both mileage and the cost of the workshop, or any other costs, and particularly if it involves overnight, those costs are usually paid for by the Board of Education. Of course, that's under whatever contract has been negotiated. But I think it's important for people to realize that many districts completely pick up that cost. But I learned today, through questioning the administration, as well as looking at the teacher contract, that that is not the case here in Monroe. And I think it is commendable when a teacher requests professional development, be it one day or be it for several days, where it involves travel and lodging, and they are willing to pick up that expense out of their own pocket, I think that's quite commendable.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment or question? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Poy, just for clarification, that's not in all situations, but the ones that you looked at today, it applied to the ones that we interacted with back and forth.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes, to all, recuse on H.
So noted. Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso.
Yes, on everything but B, G, and H.
No on B, G, and H. So noted. Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz.
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through H passes.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, at this time, we'll move to the business administrator's report. Mr. Gorski?
Yes.
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through K be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Masters. Any comments or questions for Mr. Gorski on the business administrator's report? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Masters.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Uh, yes, but I have a question on item K, since I'm involved in that, do I legally have to recuse myself?
Yes.
That would be yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, yes, except for item K.
So noted. Mr. Preziosso.
Yes.
Mr. Tesler.
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz.
Yes, except for item K, I'd like to recuse myself.
So noted. Madam Board President, board action items A through K passes.
Thank you.
That concludes the business administrator's report.
I ask a question, I'm sorry. Didn't have a question. On the police officers, is there any way, is there a difference if they're hired off-duty?
Out of curiosity.
The question was regarding...
The police officers.
Letter F, professional appointments for police officers, if there's any opportunity to ask the police to perform those services off-duty.
They wear the, they could wear their uniform and carry their gun off-duty, and if we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars a year, we could save five thousand, we could put in some lockers into the high school.
I'll be happy to check with the police department and ask them if that opportunity exists.
Okay, at this time, we will go to the board president's report, and just a couple of things. The first is the committee lists have been finalized and distributed to all the board members and the administration, so we can now start to schedule our committee meetings. And it is up to each chair of each committee to schedule their meetings and with regard to those people who are sitting on your particular committee. And some of those people will be working, some of them won't, so hopefully, we can have a time and a place that would be conducive to everybody on the committee. And it worked last year, where we had a specific date and time, like the second Tuesday of the month, at six o'clock for each committee. So maybe we can do that again, so that we know as we build the calendar where every committee meeting's going to fit in. And as we schedule our meetings, we will try to get those dates up on the website as long as, along with the agenda wherever possible. All committee meetings are open to the public to observe their working workshops for the board. We make many decisions that will be on our agenda or that have implications to the budget. And the only committee that the public is not allowed to attend is personnel. The second thing is New Jersey School Boards Association will be holding a free forum to address school safety this Friday, January eighteenth, at eight-thirty a.m. at the College of New Jersey. This forum will include two panel discussions. The first one is Looking Forward Skate, School Security Procedures and Requirements. The second is Looking Forward Safety and Security at the School Building Level. This forum is open to the staff, to the parents, and to any community member who feel that they might like to attend, but online registration is required. Both myself and Mr. Poy will be attending this forum. I don't know if there's anybody else at this time that will. And that concludes my president's report. At this time, committee reports, is there any committee that has a report today? I didn't think there would be, but seeing none. Other Board of Education business, is there any other business by any member of the Board of Education?
Okay.
Mr. Tesler?
Thank you, Kathy. Just a few things. I know a lot of board members have children or grandchildren that are in the school, and I know the administration doesn't have always a lot of time to report on all the good things that go on, like DECA and things like that, so I'd like to encourage the board members, maybe during this time, to talk to their children, grandchildren, friends, neighbors, whatever, and if they note something that happened in the past month, you know, positive that went on in the school, just to mention it. So I'll start. Last week, the High School Drama Club had their annual murder mystery comedy dinner. Was, my whole family attended. It was very well-received, it was a lot of fun, the kids did a great job, and I'd just like to commend the kids on a great performance. It was funny, it was just a well, well-put-on show, and it was a great evening. Second thing that happened last week is the Monroe Township Competition Cheerleading Team kicked off their annual competition season. They performed, or they competed both in Howell and Jackson last weekend, and not only did they take first place in their division, they won grand champs both days, which means that they won first place in their division, obviously, but grand champs means they were the highest-scoring team among all the other twenty or thirty teams that participated in those competitions, so I'd like to commend them on that. One other thing I would like to do is, Kathy mentioned, all the board members each year at the reorg meeting have to sign the Code of Ethics, and I requested that that can be put up on the website, and I believe it's also being handed out here during the meeting. But also, for the people at home, I would like to kind of just take a few minutes, I know it's not the most entertaining thing in the world, but I'll just kind of go over them and read those, so as a public service, so when people come to the board members and ask them questions, and maybe we can answer something or can't, and we just, it'll be giving the public a little more information on what rules the Board of Education members abide by. So this will only take a few moments. Number one is, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought only about through legal and ethical procedures. Number two, a board member or I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Number three, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Number four, I will behave toward, I will behave toward my fellow board members with respect due to their office, demonstrating courtesy, decorum, and fair play at all public meetings and in public statements. Number five, I will refrain from inappropriate conduct at public meetings. When making public statements, I will refrain from disparaging my fellow board members or any, or others on a personal, social, racial, or religious bias basis. Number six, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer to schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they run well. And when every new board member is elected, we are required to take a class that goes over these, but basically, we are not, are told, or part of our responsibility is not to micromanage the board and the day-to-day activities, but to make sure they run well by supporting the administration. Number seven, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and I will make no personal promises, nor take any private action that may compromise the board, which basically means that the board only can make decisions as a whole in a public meeting. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for gain of friends. Number nine, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all of the matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Number ten, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrator officer, administrative officer, or the superintendent. Number eleven, I will support and protect school personnel, I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. And finally, number eleven, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and it will act on complaints at public meetings only after a failure of an administrative solution, which basically means there's a certain procedure that board members are required to follow, and that if a friend or somebody comes to us with an issue, they should, if it's an issue about a teacher or something like that, they should go through the chain of command, they should talk to the teacher first. If that gets, doesn't get resolved, they should talk to the building principal and move up the chain of command to the superintendent. So, you know, it's not that if somebody has a complaint, that a board member not want to, does not want to help them directly, but it's their job, and we're bound by the Code of Ethics to direct them to that chain of command. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, I'd like to take a moment and read War and Peace to everyone. Thanks, Sacra. I just wanted to quickly, I'm the liaison from the board to the rec board. We had a meeting on Monday, so I just wanted to quickly go over the house decorating contest that we had, which was wonderful. And I just want to remind everyone that there's, there are a lot of great people at the rec board, they have a lot of good programs for children and for adults. There's a lot of, a lot of different things that go on there that can occupy everyone's time, if you have the time, or if you want to go play. But I just wanted to, I don't often report on the rec board activities, so I just wanted to bring that up, and I'm going to do that more. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that I'm on the Historic Preservation Commission also, and on the twenty-fourth of February, that's Monroe's one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth birthday. So we've been around a long time, and you know, we are, you know, Jamesburg has been around even longer than we've been around, so you know, we have a common history. But I think it's very important that our children, we're a very diverse community. We have a lot of people coming in who don't know their local history, and I think it's important for us to foster that in some way, so that they get a sense of their roots. And I think that's a good way for us to build our community, and to break down barriers and create bridges to different communities by having everyone understand their shared heritage. So what I'd like to ask is that we segregate some space, maybe at the high school or at a couple of different schools, for displays, picture displays. The Historic Preservation Commission is willing to bring that, bring the pictures and create the displays, if that would be something that we can do, so that we could have the kids be able to come out and look at the displays and get a sense of, you know, the history. Each picture, they're great pictures, but each one has a...
Story.
Yeah, a little story. It tells, you know, what, let's say, for instance, there's a picture of a potato farm, and it'll give the history on potato farming and the families that farmed and the different activities that went on during that time. But I think that's a, I think it's a good way for our children to just get that sense of a shared bond, so.
We'll have Dr. Hamilton looking.
Yeah, that'll be great. If we can actually coordinate that with Bob Millay, he can be the contact person on that.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Masters?
Two things. One, since you've been on rec board, I haven't won or even come runner-up, so I think there's a correlation with that. I'm not sure. Just piggybacking on what Ira said, a couple of years ago, when we had that big flooding, and a bunch of us were down there cleaning up houses and throwing out people's belongings, the one thing I remember coming out of the houses and outside was the cheerleaders, and I believe it was also the band with pizza for everybody, anybody that was hungry. And it was a very, it was a very emotional thing to see somebody come out, especially kids, I call them kids, and try to help out with their neighbors, and also the people helping out, so you brought it up, so I'm piggybacking on it. I noticed.
Anyone else?
Just, if I may.
Dr. Hamilton?
Uh, just one, I forgot to mention this in the superintendent's report, just wanted to share with the board that we did officially file the lawsuit today against Jamesburg regarding the debt, the interest on the debt service that we've been debating for the last year and a half, so those papers have been filed.
We don't have one?
We do, we do on HIB.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't have it online. Okay, any other business from any member of the Board of Education? Mr. Zarneski?
We're going into closed session, I guess, according to the agenda next.
Yes.
I'd like to bring everybody's...
I'd like to bring to everybody's attention a few board members here and Dr. Hamilton I brought up earlier. There is a state ruling on public meetings. I have some other handouts for other board members if they still like to see that. Back in August of 2012, Jamesburg started doing this before they go into public session. It's a courtesy given to the public that we give an approximate time on how long we're going to be, so the public's not hanging out 20 minutes, an hour while we're in closed session wondering what's going on. And again, this is only approximate time that is given. Say it's 10 minutes, we go five, we come out in five, if we go 10 minutes and we're in closed session, we see it's going a little bit longer, somebody will come out and then proceed to tell the public we're going to be about another five, 10 minutes, or a half hour, whatever it would be. And I'd like to make a motion that we institute something like that starting tonight.
I second.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Zorneski, second by Mr. Prezioso. Is there any conversation or comments or questions? Mr. Tesler?
No, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, do we need a roll call on this? Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zorneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Sure. Yes.
Record that as a yes. Mr. Poy?
Abstain.
So noted. Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponov?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion to provide an estimate of closed session time passes.
Yeah, usually I would say that this would be very quick or that this could take a long time, but we were never specific in the amount of time that we...
Again, it's just an estimate. We kind of have an idea, I know we do on the Jamesburg Board, about how long we're going to be there. You have to understand too, that sometimes there are many questions, like you see out here, several board members have questions, and that's where you would come back out, whether it be a designated person, say, "We need to bring down another five, 10 minutes to discuss and we'll be back shortly," so. It really is as simple as that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then this time we will go to closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJ SA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21 to discuss the following subjects, HIB report. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Mr. Chiarella and Mr. Kaufman, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then we will move into closed session and this should only take about 10 minutes. At this time, the board will move back into public session and we will go to the number 14, the public forum. And again, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And we will adhere to our three-minute time limit.
It's not going to be long. Nelson Chen for Ashley Court. I just want to say that the township has at least given us the impression that they're trying to kind of put a dent in the budget and forego any type of tax increases. And I would just like to ask the board that you be cognizant of that fact when you vote in the budget. I know the budget is coming soon, and just be cognizant of the fact, who has to pay the bill? We understand safety for the kids, we understand education for the kids. Believe me, I have two kids, we understand that, but at what price? If things keep going up and the way they are, nobody will be able to afford the homes we live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gary Busman, Severn Monarch Road, Stonebridge Adult Community. I don't know if what I'm about to say is correct under state law, nor do I realize if you folks have ever made, had this item as, for consideration. And it deals with this lovely room that we're in. This is a library. This library has staff, it has books, it has a lot of space. There's a huge amount of square footage in here. I would guess there's 7,000 or 8,000, maybe more, square footage in this room. So, as a suggestion, and again, I say, I don't know if you've considered this or if it's required or allowed under state law. There have communities in other states that I have seen libraries attached to high schools or high, or libraries being very close to a high school, and it becomes interchangeable with the residents of the town and the students within the high school. So, think about that. Just think of how much money could be saved if there was no library in this building and the library across the street was used to allow the children within this building to facilitate that particular facility. No library, no librarian, no assistant librarian, no research librarian. Just delve on that because that could be a possible tremendous savings for the municipality and the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Leah Gross and I live on Valencia Drive in Monroe. And I'd like to address the closed session that you just had. I would like to try to understand why that closed session cannot be done before this meeting or after we are all gone, since you don't share with us at the present time. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
There were, there were things or recommendations that come out of closed session that we put on the agenda when we come out, and there are people in the audience that, that would like to respond to the, to the, to the discussion that we have after closed session. So, because there are things in closed sessions, sometimes they're not finished in closed session, sometimes they go on, but if there's any, any matters that have been resolved, we bring them back to the, to the board for resolution and discussion and a vote.
So, can you do that after we're gone and then share with us the next time before? You can do this before we come and then bring it to our attention after.
Well, we'll take that under consideration, but there have been just as many people that have asked us to have it at this time. There have been people who have asked to have it at the beginning of the board meeting, so after doing this, we've just felt that this is the best place to keep our closed session. So, we will take that under consideration. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'm Mary Ann Sullivan. I live at 12 Shebley Quat in the Renaissance at Cranberry Crossing. First of all, I have a question. Where do we stand on the legislation for Senate Bill 2307 at this point in time?
I spoke with Senator Greenstein late last week on Friday, as Mr. Masters can attest because he was on the phone call also, and the Senate bill now is being introduced to the Education Committee of the Senate. And I'm glad you brought it up because the district is trying to solicit all of the public's participation in a letter-writing campaign, or even if you don't have the time to write a letter, please visit our website on the top right-hand section, there's areas in red, you can get the phone numbers for your local representatives, and that's what's going to get this legislation passed. It's the, it's the voice of the people that will put the pressure on the legislators to pass this much-needed tax relief for our community. And as I mentioned before, the board has dedicated this money for tax relief.
We have done that in our community, I know that several others have also done that, and we have received response letters from Mr. Benson and also Mr. D'Angelo. And they, in these letters, have stated what their legislation also is. But I would like to bring something to your attention that maybe hasn't been brought to your attention before, and that is, in the senior communities, we are assessed monthly fees. Those monthly fees are used to pay the bills of the community at large. And basically, if there are foreclosures or people who move do not pay those monthly fees, they're passed on to the rest of us who are members of the community. And more and more, it's becoming a reality that there are foreclosures and there are people who are not able, for whatever reason, to maintain those monthly fees, and therefore those expenses are being passed on to us. I think everyone here probably needs to know that if more and more people begin moving out of these communities and more and more of those fees gets passed on to the rest of us living there, we're just not going to be able to sustain higher school taxes, higher monthly fees, and we'll be moving out of our homes too. So, please take that into consideration.
Ma'am, when Dr. Hamilton and I responded to the state aid crisis that we have here in our community, we wanted to develop legislation that put that very issue that you just discussed at the paramount of importance for this address. And Senator Greenstein, Wayne D'Angelo, Senator Benson, were all very sympathetic and very understanding of the hardships that are being felt throughout the retirement communities. These are populations of individuals who have put their own kids to school already, many times are helping out with their grandkids and are on fixed income, social security and everything is, is very tight. So, we wanted your face to be on this bill, and we believe it is, and it properly represents your need for tax relief in the community.
And again, like Mr. Gorsky said, the more people that come out in support of this, the better off we will be. We have a better chance of getting this passed if everybody will go on the website and just email your, your representatives or, and send your, you call your neighbors and have them support this too, because the more people out there that do that, the better off we are.
If you, if I may, Kathy, if you aren't so inclined to mail in a letter, you can call and simply say, "My name is John Doe, I live in such and such a place in Monroe. Please support Senate Bill 2307," and that information is recorded as well. Kathy?
Mr. Kaufman?
For those of you that don't know, the Monroe Township website address is monroe.k12 nj.us. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Hello. Guy Delray, Ashley Court. Just to follow up on that, when you go ahead and prepare the budget, are you keeping in mind that we may not get that money from the state? And, or is your budget going to be your budget and who pays for it, whether it's the state aid or the people going, it doesn't matter?
I'll have Mr. Gorsky respond.
Historically, the budget's built on expecting flat state aid from the preceding year. That's worked in many years, except for the one year where we lost 95% of our aid. We were caught quite short there by $4.6 million. The 1314 budget will be based on an estimate of the 1213 state aid that we received. It will not include an anticipation of additional aid through S2307, as it's improbable that that aid would be passed in time for the state to include it in their award, which comes out in early March. But it would affect the following year for 1415 if it's successful.
So, any aid that we're getting will be really for the following year?
Most likely, that's correct.
Okay, I mean, just as a comment, because, you know, we were basically having a budget up until three, four years ago, I don't know when exactly the state aid stopped, that took into account the state aid. I just get the feeling, I think most of us do, that once that aid stopped, you looked at us to compensate for that budget. And it's in the past and so forth, and it's fine, but going forward, you know, let's not just assume that if the state or doesn't give us the money, we're, we have all the cash that, that we need to do stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Robert Roach, 18 York Field Boulevard. Two items. One, as far as the closed session goes, a couple of years ago, I suggested that you have a public forum before the closed session, and if you could also have a public forum after the closed session, if you felt there was something that needed to be done at that second closed session. Now, I don't think anything, I know, nothing's ever been done on that, I would like you to reconsider that whole thing. If you feel you have to have the public session after the closed session, from what I understand, there's no prohibition against having a closed, having multiple closed, public forums. The second thing is that, from my understanding, the township is working very diligently to try to keep their tax rate the same in, for next year as, as it was last year. In other words, they don't want any raise. They don't want any increase in the tax rate. Now, I know you have directed Dr. Hamilton to, the board has directed Dr. Hamilton to prepare a budget to the maximum of the allowable by the law with the 2% cap and the exceptions to this 2% cap. I wish the, the board would reconsider that decision and try to keep the tax rate as, you know, consistent with last year, so that we don't have this, another tax increase. Thank you. Go ahead.
No, I, in December 13th, 2012, the board held a special meeting, and it was in regard to the budget philosophy for the upcoming budget. And I think there was only one person from the public that attended that meeting. We were here, must have been here for a couple of hours, discussing what, what we should and should not put in the budget, what we could and could not put in the budget. And it was the recommendation of the superintendent and the business administrator to go up to cap and some of the reasons why, or the addition of the 200-plus students that we're expecting next year, the necessity, the necessity to do some much-needed capital projects in our district that would normally, we would need a referendum from, but it's getting to the point where if we don't do it now, we're going to be in big trouble. And one of them is to repair the roof at the middle school, which very badly needs to be repaired. We, we have been requested to address our busing situation because of problems that we have with the outsourced buses to make it 100% in-house buses and mandatory bus and van replacements that we have to do this year. Mike, I don't know if you have...
Please purchase.
If you have anything to add to that, with what we, we said we would put in the budget?
I would just like to emphasize that, you know, it's clear that there's a lot of public sentiment that there's a disconnect between those who prepare the budget and the taxpayers who, who support the budget. There's a great appreciation for everyone who pays taxes in this community, there's a great respect for everybody who pays taxes in this community. I believe waste has been eliminated from our budget, however, with 225 new students next year and at least six facilities that need serious roof repairs, with a new instructional technology lease that comes into the next two years as required payments, with contractual salary increases that are defined for the next two years for our four bargaining groups, as well as some higher-than-anticipated health insurance increases, it would be extraordinarily difficult this year to prepare a budget that didn't utilize the state of New Jersey's already conservative approach to minimize the tax consequences on the communities, and that is by going to the 2% tax levy cap. And again, by going to the tax levy cap that looks back at your preceding year's general fund tax levy and with some minor adjustments, increases it by 2%, that number is estimated to be $2 million. As we discussed before, just the cost of educating 225 new students is above $3.4 million. The middle school roof was $1.25 million as an estimate for the budget. The instructional iPad lease is $500,000. The new vans and buses that are required by... The new vans and buses that are required by the state are $100,000 lease obligation for next year's budget. So I hope that better explains the need, in administration's opinion, to go to cap.
Well, these roof problems have been, from what I understand, at least a 10-year problem. They should have been handled during the normal budget process and over all those years rather than trying to hit us now. And though you may have some expenses that you feel that you have to pay and it's increasing the budget, the taxpayers also have expenses we have to pay. And it's not where we can just chip into our -- go into our pocket and ask somebody to give us more money. We're not getting any more money. You do, because you just ask -- keep asking us. And I think you've got to look at all your expenses and say, "Okay, it's not -- we can't do this anymore." And until you take that philosophy, there's going to be big problems between the public and the Board of Education. Thank you.
Joe Casteluccio, 20, Ashley Court. There was an interesting statistic that came out the other day. You could look it up. They looked into the U.S. government and said, "What do you think waste? You actually have waste every year." They admitted to 5%. They said 5% of our budget comes out to like $250 billion. It's just an obscene amount of money that's wasted, because when you really look into what you're doing on an annual basis, easily you can get 5% or 10%. And that's without affecting the education of children. I think it's disingenuous when everybody talks about cutting wasteful spending, and the first thing people do to come down and say, "Well, you know, we have to educate our children," is using that as sort of like a defense that we're insinuating, that we're telling you not to educate the children. Of course, we are. But I can guarantee you, and I'm not an accountant, and anybody else in this room can, if we looked at what you're spending, you could find 5% or 10% of that budget, and you could cut it, and you could cut it very easily. You choose to go to a 2% cap. If it were a 3% cap, guess what? You'd go to a 3% cap. That's the way it works. It always works that way, because if you have the money, you'll spend it. You have to look at the budget as if it were your own home budget. You spend what you can afford to spend on. If you maxed out your credit card, the whole thing, you just don't spend anymore. You just don't get another credit card, say, "Okay, well, you know, I maxed that one. Now, let me go get another one." The people in this town, and this is really a mathematical issue for every one of you, that woman just talked about the expenses on her -- in her community, where they have to pay their fees. It goes even deeper than that. When we have foreclosures in the township and we have appeals in the township, when those people win appeals, guess who pays the rest of the tax that they're not paying? We do. So our taxes go up. You know that. That's what happened last time. You have to figure out that every year, that's going to happen. We have a crummy economy. It's not getting any better. A lot of people out of work. You know, the underemployment rate and the employment rate are close to 14%. That's how many people out of work. And when you have retirees in this particular town, it just magnifies it dramatically. I don't even understand, and I know you can probably say because the law -- laws are man-made, by the way, and they're made because the numbers don't lie, but liars make numbers. That's the way it works. We have -- we -- somebody would have to explain to me why Old Bridge gets $4,400 back for each student, why East Brunswick gets about $2,000, these approximate numbers, why Monroe only gets 500. And no one has even attempted to look at the equal protection law, the 14th Amendment that says everyone gets equal protection under the law. Why are the children in Monroe Township looked at in a different way? Why isn't every child in New Jersey given the same amount of money back from the state rather than look at it as a community and look at some mathematical formula, man-made formula that somebody put together to suit their election results, not to look at the real issue that's there? That money should be coming back. We should be getting certainly as much as East Brunswick. And I know you're going to talk about how these mathematical formulas are fabricated. It's nonsense. We should be fighting for the rights of those kids to get the right amount of money back to this town and not go after the taxpayers every time you need to get a nickel and dime. You're going to bury this town. And one other thing, it was an interesting thing. There was a -- when they built the high school, they wanted to put a cornerstone --
Excuse me, your time is up?
-- cornerstone on each building, and they wanted to know what to put on that cornerstone, what names they should put on the cornerstone. What you're going to wind up putting there is R.I.P. Rest in peace. Thank you.
Shell Arminio 9, Nathaniel Street. Can we go back to the IAQ? And do the teachers submit a report when they submit their hours that they worked? Is there anything in writing that follows their workload?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. They do -- so what do they -- can you explain that a little bit, what they submit?
Whatever they -- if they are submitting up to their 10 hours or a portion of their 10 hours, they have to submit a log that demonstrates what they did on such and such a day and how much time they spent doing it in order for that time sheet to be approved and processed.
And really, it's just passing along information from -- right, from one party to another? Where do they report -- who do they report to?
Their building principals.
So why can't the teacher or whoever has an issue just go to the building principals? That would -- or the facilitator, the head custodian of that building?
I can't answer that.
Well, it may be some -- you know, I think you're really not -- I think you're hearing us but not listening. There are things that maybe don't work or exceed what is necessary. That seems like fluff, if you don't mind me saying so.
No, when the --
May I finish?
Surely.
And there are things that maybe we can eliminate, albeit not a whole lot of money on an $86 million budget, but things like that that really don't seem to mean anything. I mean, if I had -- if there were a problem with air quality, I would think either the principal or the head custodian. And then we also have a facilities director for the whole community, I mean, for the whole school system. So how many layers of bureaucracy do we have to go to to say, "There's an odor problem or there's an air quality problem"? It really -- that is like the perfect example of waste.
It may appear that way now, but 10 years ago, when this was negotiated and this was discussed, there was relevant information that led the board to see that as a viable option to resolve a significant problem that existed in the district at that time.
Okay. Well, maybe it's one of the things that you can reevaluate, just like for 10 years you were paying to take students to a private school facility after classes. So that was terminated. I mean, these are the kinds of things that the public's asking. No one wants a teacher not to teach the children. No one wants to have, you know, a large school. But these little things can add up, and you can help the public understand that you're really doing some due diligence. Just because it's been going on for 10 years, one may say, "Well, we've wasted all that money for 10 years," and you might have been able to put busing back, or you might have been able to put a needed club for children. That doesn't seem like it's about the children. It's for the kids. I mean, if a teacher has a problem, why can't she communicate directly with a principal? It just seems a perfect example of reevaluating some of the things that are in the school system that should be eliminated. Next. I would like your consideration to a few more minutes.
Just one more minute.
Okay.
For one more question.
What was done in the resolution? Did you finalize anything in the closed session?
No. It's just an HIB bullying report that is mandated that the board look at every month.
Okay. So there's no need for a resolution or something voted on? So you just have -- the board is aware of what's going on, in other words, based on bullying?
It has to do with students.
Okay. And just again, I know the state aid is a big issue, but it's a small portion of our total budget. And regardless of whether we get state aid back or not, this administration and some members of the board for years, another like 10 years, we could talk about it in decades, that the administration always goes to the maximum allowable. And I know the reason for that. I know that means if you go to the maximum amount allowable this year, when you go to the maximum allowable next year, that's that much more money you'll be getting. I get that. But it doesn't mean that it's really the right thing to do. There needs to be some consideration. I know that's the administration's job, but please, let's consider what's important for the children, not just spending. Thank you.
You mentioned the 200 --
Name and address for the record, please.
Guy Del Ray, Ashley Court. You mentioned the 225 new kids. I've been coming to these meetings since late last year, I guess, and I keep hearing that. But one thing is bothering me about that, and maybe you could answer the issue I have on my mind. Why is it that I only hear the cost aspect of the township expanding and the new 225 kids? I know for a fact that a lot of adult communities, new construction adult community is still being sold, and we have income coming in from those homes that don't have any children. So why is it that we -- and there's also new construction still going on, that we're bringing in new people. And out of that 225 people, I don't think it's existing pregnant Monroe Townships that got pregnant. I'm sure there's new people that came in that are paying taxes. So why is it that we only hear the cost aspect of the 225 kids but not the revenue-generating part of it?
The revenue-generating part of people moving in into the community, creating the new enrollment figures, would be reflected in the ratables that share the tax levy, mostly due to the appeals. The last two years, the ratables have dropped $71 million and $78 million, respectively. What that dropped last year has meant to the tax increase is for an average home that went up $146 last year, $100 of it was attributable to the decreasing ratable base. So although we have new people coming in, and every year this district is accommodating 225 approximate new students, the amount of folks in the community sharing the burden for that is shrinking, and that's why everybody's rate is increasing.
It's shrinking how?
It's shrinking because the overall aggregate valuation of ratables is decreasing every year, which causes everybody's rate to increase.
Okay. But again, you keep increasing this per-student cost every year to our 200-plus student, but some of that cost is fixed, correct?
Some of that cost is fixed.
So why are 225 new students -- and I really just want to understand this. Why is it that every 225, 250 new students are all calculated at the $13,000, $14,000 a year cost that it costs to educate a child?
Because that average, the average is about $15,500 per pupil when you take it across all grade levels. That's calculated by the state. It's included in our budget documents. That's, on average, what it costs this district to educate every pupil annually.
Is that a true cost?
And of course, you can receive 225 students and cram them in one year and try to hold your breath on these costs, but next year, when it turns into 450, that's another school. That's a small school by itself, and that's why this compounds, and the average is true, and it is $15,000. To the point of going to cap, I want to make this abundantly clear. By going to cap, we increased the tax levy $2 million. The cost in accommodating those 225 students is about $3.4 million. So we're not -- by going to cap, we're not even meeting the needs of the new students coming in. The true problem here that's affecting everybody's taxes is the abandonment of state aid in the township of Monroe. We receive no equalization aid, and it's because the state of New Jersey determines that you are too wealthy and your property values are higher than the most communities in the state.
But that's understood, and we've known -- we've been hearing that for as long as I remember. So isn't putting together a budget, doesn't that take that into account?
Unless if you're going to put a padlock on the front door and turn those 225 kids away, that's a cost you can't turn your back on.
It's like Joe said, and what Michelle said. There's stuff that we probably do that are ten before any one of you came here, that it seems to me old stuff does not get revisited. We only talk about what you want to do next year. Okay? Maybe we need to revisit some of the old stuff. Maybe half of you should be on a committee that that's all they do, is revisit old stuff and get rid of the stuff that isn't necessary, and maybe use that money to put into something that's more necessary as opposed to just keep going and then raising the taxes. Are you going to say something?
No.
Just taking the mic. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
There is another issue that I'd just like to bring to the floor.
Could you please give your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Mary Ann Sullivan, Renaissance at Cranberry Crossing, off of Apple Garth. Basically, if the government, our present government, decides that they're going to shut down, we in the senior communities are facing a major issue. Social Security checks will not be on time. Neither will some pensions be on time. And I think that's going to become a real hardship, so you folks may not get your money.
Anyone else from the public?
Raj Purswani, Primrose Acres. I have two questions. If you had only 90% of the money available that you're budgeting, and you had a mandate to educate all the kids that you have, what would you do?
Would you repeat that? If you had 90 kids?
If you only had 90% of the money that is budgeted now with the gap --
90% of the money?
90%.
Only 90% of the money. So 10% less than what you have or expecting?
Yes.
And you had the same mandate to educate all the kids in the town, what would you do?
Well, as the Board of Education has done each year when we put together the budget, it's always under dire circumstances and estimates of state aid. You look at programs. You make every principal produce a budget that passes what we termed as principal defense rounds, showing that each expenditure corresponds with district goals and objectives. And you operate as efficiently as you possibly can.
So why can't you do that?
I believe we have, sir. I believe we have.
Then why is it going to the 2% cap? Why not 10% below the previous year's budget?
If we had no new students coming in, then it might be plausible to have a no appropriation increase in the budget. If you had a 0% increase contracted with the teachers and the administrators and the custodians, then it might be possible to put forth a budget that has no appropriation increase. If you had roofs that were in a condition that did not immediately have to be addressed, then you wouldn't have to increase appropriations for roofs. And if the state didn't require you to do mandates and replace buses according to a schedule, then you wouldn't have to expend monies in those areas. But every year, they layer on, and I believe the board efficiently operates with your tax money.
Why can we not give the teachers a 10% cut?
Because that's contractual. We just can't mandate that they would have a cut.
Who signs the contracts? Who writes the contracts?
The contracts are signed by the union and the Board of Education.
Okay. So we agreed to the increases, right? To the raises?
Well, like, it's negotiated.
Yeah, but why did we agree to the raise when you know that we are, you know, short of money?
Because the contract was negotiated two years ago, a year and a half ago.
So you had surplus money back then, or you were expecting more money from the
taxpayers?
Well, we negotiated a contract with the unions where there was no additional cost to the Board of Education.
Was there any representative from the taxpayer's side who negotiated this, or was it only union negotiating against the union?
Board of Ed members or representative of taxpayers. I live here. I pay taxes.
The Board of Education is elected by the community to negotiate the contracts.
Right. But did the Board of Education negotiate the contracts in the best interest of the taxpayer?
I believe we did. Mr. Chiarela, you were on the --
Yeah, I believe we did. I think we had a number of givebacks, but you have to understand the whole situation and how this works. You could be adversarial to the teachers' union. You could say, "Hey, teachers, we're not going to give you anything, and we're going to -- we want to cut you by 10% or 20% or whatever." We could come to the table with that. But you know what? What's going to happen is it's going to go to arbitration, and at the end of the day, whether that's the right thing or the wrong thing, there's going to be a ruling, and that ruling could even be against us at that point. So we could end up even having a worse situation. So when you negotiate, the art of negotiation is give and take, and that's what we did. I mean, if you look at what we did as far as givebacks with health insurance and stuff like that, it pretty much negated the raise that they received. And Mr. Gorsky could explain that better than I can, but there are a lot of things that go into this, you know? And just so you understand also, we're talking about 225 new students. Well, and I understand what people -- Well, and I understand what people think, well, you have people buying houses, and they're bringing the students, and that's not necessarily the case. You have renters in some cases. You also have multiple families in one house now. You know, people are suffering, granted, and I get that. But when you have people living in a house with two or three families in a house with multiple children in each family, and they all come to the schools, we still have to, we still have to pay for that. And that is a new trend, and that's been happening for the last couple of years. So all of those things have to be looked at and brought in, and you know, I don't think there's anybody on this board who's saying, oh, let's, you know, let's just screw the taxpayers, and let's just take them to the cleaners. We're all taxpayers. I mean, there are people here on this board that pay 15, $20,000 a year in property taxes. I mean, that's, and that's ridiculous. The problem is with the way we fund our schools. And that's a fundamental systemic issue that has to be addressed, absolutely, but we can't just defund our schools and make our teachers the enemy and sit here and say, you know, let's just go to war. Yeah, we have to draw the line on spending. We have to do the right things with regards to spending too much or frivolous spending. And where we see that happening, we try to root it out. I know I do, and I know several other board members do the same thing also. So I just want you to understand that there's a whole, there's a big picture here. And to just enter the picture at some point and say, hey, you know, cut 10%, and, or, you know, what would you do if you have 90%? And just, why don't you just do it? Yeah, it might make a lot of sense coming in from the outside for the first time and attending a board meeting and feeling that, but when you really look at the, there's a whole bunch of things that go into this, and a lot of constraints that are put on not only the board, but the administration also.
And one of the things, too, is our budget is probably 85% fixed, where there are contracted costs, there are costs that we pay every, every year such as gas, electric, and things like that, where there's only about 15% of the budget that we can really look and, and cut. And a lot of that has to do with our kids and the offerings we give them, and the courses they take, and things like that. So in regard to negotiations, it's not like we sit around for a weekend and negotiate. We spent 10 months negotiating a contract, the four bargaining units, and that was just the one bargaining unit. It was something that we asked them to pay for more, and, you know, we negotiated, and I'll let Mike talk about the opt-out, where we were able to not cost the district any more money while still giving them a raise. And I think if anybody can do that, that's a great negotiating, negotiations.
In simple terms, what do you think the aggregate cost of the increases of 2, 2, and 2.25 are over the three-year period to the district?
Is the 2, 2.5?
Total cost, total cost of all those increases. The answer is zero. There is zero budgetary impact of offering teachers 2, 2, and 2.25% increases and raises because of the give backs that the unions have engaged in, and also the opt-out of health insurance where they've foregone coverage and reduced the health insurance cost.
What is the average compensation for a teacher in New Jersey or in our school district versus the rest of the country?
Did you say the average compensation?
For a teacher in our district?
About 60,000 to 65,000?
Versus the rest of the country?
For the country?
Yeah.
It varies.
For Middlesex County even, if I can just jump in, for Middlesex County, our teachers are nowhere near the top of the pay scale. But Ken Chiarella kind of alluded to something I want to talk to you a little bit about. Let's just say the board took a position, we're going to go in and we're going to, we're going to be hard lines, we're going to give, we're going to try to negotiate a 0% increase or 10% reduction, as you proposed. Essentially, what would happen in that scenario is an arbitrator would come in, cost money, and that arbitrator is going to say, we're going to look at what the average increases are across the county and across the state. And they are going to then impose what they believe to be a fair and average settlement, whether we like it or not. So there's a risk in doing so. The risk is, you may go in thinking that a 2 or 2 and 1/2, or 2, 2.25 is a lot of money, but when you look at other districts and you risk going to a mediator who may come back and say, well, other districts are getting 3 and 3 and 1/2, there's a risk that that could be imposed on you as well. So all those things have to be calculated when you're negotiating, because there is a risk in drawing a heart-nose line against any sort of increase or decrease even, because the potential for us to have negotiated the kind of deal that we did, where there was a 0% impact on the budget, gets smaller and smaller when we go in with those kinds of tactics.
Okay, one more question. So the average price to build a house is about 100 to $120 a square foot. What was the cost to build this high school per square foot?
I can't answer that question, because I'd have to check with our facilities director. I'm not prepared to answer that question at this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Stuart Block, 17 Vineyard Court, Cranberry Crossing, 45th and 5th North Communities. Don't the school system have some sort of reserve fund to pay for the roofs and things like that, and the school buses to replacement? Because our communities have things, has reserve funds for these things?
In the past, school districts could put money that was excess at the end of each school year into reserve accounts. One of them is the maintenance reserve. When the budget crisis hit in 2008, the states went in and took all the school districts' maintenance reserves. Jamesburg School District lost an incredible amount of money when the state came in and pirated their maintenance reserve. Now, the Monroe Township Board of Education had money in what's called a capital reserve that was designed for roof replacements years ago, and due to efficient bidding and so on, we had some excess in there that the Board of Education dedicated toward the repairs at Apple Garth School. So the balance in our capital reserve account now is low because of the address at Apple Garth School last year.
So we did have a reserve fund?
Yes, and it's been utilized.
Is part of the money in the budget now for a reserve fund for the future?
You could allocate money into reserve that comes from either budgeting for it or under-expending what you budgeted for. Those are two ways of doing it.
I just want to make a statement. One of my neighbors recently put their house up for sale because they can't afford the taxes here. Another one just sold their house, they're closing this month, moving to Florida where the taxes are going to be about 20% of what it costs to live in this town. More and more people are putting their houses up for sale because they can't afford to live here. I understand what you're saying, teachers, I'm not saying teachers shouldn't get raises, especially when you're offsetting it with all the costs. I have nothing against the teachers, but there are other things like this ICQ thing, which is ridiculous. There's got to be ways of cutting money someplace. Not against the teachers, but you know the fluff. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
My name is Mira Ribbon. I live at 16D James Buchanan Drive, Concordia. I really just want to reiterate the need to cut the fluff, to find, to really dig, 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 and find whatever waste can be cut. And I'd like to make a simple analogy. The people of the country have asked the federal government to look at their budget like each of us as individual households look at our budget. And when we cannot meet our budgetary requirements, we tighten our belts, because none of us here can simply go to our bosses and ask for more money if, for instance, our grandchildren come to move in with us, which would be equivalent to the 225 new students coming into the school. If we had the same percentage of new mouths to feed in our family and medical costs, et cetera, that would, we'd be required to spend if new family members moved in with us. We can't just go to our bosses and ask for a raise. We cannot go to Social Security and ask for a raise. We can't go to our pensions and ask for a raise. So when we have additional expenses of people moving in, or if we need a new roof on our homes, we simply have to tighten our belts and cut back elsewhere. And that is what we are asking you to do. We're asking you to act responsibly as you would in your own personal home budgets. Cut back, find some cuts. You know, even if it is that tiny amount of $45 an hour for the air quality control, if nothing else, it would give us the impression that you are hearing us, listening to us, and making some effort to do what we are begging you to do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Paul Friedis for Laura Lightway. I have a question for Dr. Hamilton. That report that you're getting tomorrow from the police department, will that be shared with the public on safety?
Excuse me, I'm not sure, because I don't know what the report entails, and I'm not sure if that is something or not that can be shared publicly, so I'm not really at liberty to make a commitment to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nelson Chen for Ashley Court. I think for the last 20 minutes or half hour, you've heard people in the audience begging you and asking you to do the right thing as far as the budget is concerned, but I have not heard any feedback from any of you as far as that is concerned. Will you at least commit to the public here and, you know, and tell us that you're going to look at the waste that's out there and try to cut some of it, like the air quality controller? Are you going to do some of that for us? I understand that there's capital improvements that have to be made. We all understand that. But as that lady so eloquently stated, we all have to tighten our belts, because we can't get the money from anywhere else. It's just us. We're not like you, and we're the ones who put you in place. These are the people that voted for you folks that are sitting there. And you're the folks that approved the budget, not the people out here. You folks do. We'd like to know what you're going to do. Thank you.
Mr. Tesler?
I'm sorry, if I may.
You can go ahead.
What the public may not know is that we have already started that process, and that's what the tenure defense, the tenure, the budget defense rounds are designed to do. So the budgets have, we have already eliminated that. And what you have to understand is, when you look at those fixed costs, the number of students, the roof, et cetera, if the budget was going up, what do those costs come out to, Mike? I guess, I'm guessing about 4 mil?
It's over 4 million. It's about 4 and 1/2 million for the student costs alone and the roof, and we have instructional lease obligations that are committed to, and bus replacements. It's about 4.5, 4.7 million dollars of costs.
So we are not allowed legally to grow our budget by those, the amount that those costs would actualize, correct?
That's correct. None of those costs give you any adjustment in the budget. You have to live within your cap to fit them.
So in order to create a budget that meets the muster from a state level, we have to therefore identify cuts that make the difference between what those additions would cost and what we are allowed to increase our budget, and that difference amounts to what?
There'll be cuts to the budget of about 2 and 1/2 to 2.75 million dollars. And to reinforce that point, if your fixed costs and the demands of the new students that are beyond our control add up to 4.75 million dollars, and by going to cap, you're allowed to, you have to go cut into bone for the difference. And that's the efficiencies that this board has had to recognize over the last several years.
So my point is, when the public comes and says, cut, 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 that is exactly what we've been doing in order to meet the demands and their limitations imposed upon us by the 2% cap. So if we did not have to plan for these additional fixed costs that are beyond our control, we can't tell the kids they can't come here, we can't not replace the buses, those are things that we have to do. So in order to do that, we automatically, before we even come to the public, have identified 2, in excess of $2 million in reductions to the budget. So it's not that your concerns are not being heard, it's that we have anticipated these concerns, and in our due diligence, have already addressed those kinds of reductions in our preliminary budget preparation steps.
Jeff?
Mr. Coughlin?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Dr. Hamilton had just said, I know a lot of you have been coming to recent board meetings, starting probably around October, November, coming to the board meetings religiously. It's interesting, and those of you that have been coming, like, almost to all the board meetings, right before everyone started coming to the board to talk about taxes and where you're going to look to cut, just the meeting before that, the board defended their position to eliminate the late bus runs because of budgetary constraints. And the interesting thing that happened on that evening is, we had three times as many parents here that night asking us to reconsider that, to put it back on the general operating budget, to not do away with it because of the issues that were going to be affecting all of the parents in the district. The board, I think, did the right thing. At first, we were going to vote on it right there that night, but decided to take it back to the finance committee, take a second look at it, and we upheld the decision that we made prior, that at that time, for the reasons we articulated at that point, we would not be reinstating the late-run buses because of the cost involved. We did also commit that we would look into a pay-as-you-go type of scenario moving forward potentially for next year, hoping that the Buildings and Grounds Meeting Committee continues to look for that, so that, you know, if you're going to use the busing, then you pay for the busing. The idea here is, there are a lot of things that we've thought as this board to put into our schools to benefit them when they move for postgraduate work, and to, you know, put a lot of programs in place. A lot of them are optional, right? But everything has a cost. One of the things that we had done in the finance committee at the time was to look at things of, if you want to participate in these things, then parents would need to cover the cost. That's kind of unique to a school system, because schools usually don't work that way. But, you know, we are trying to do our very best to offset the general cost across the board, and for folks that need to use certain things like late-run buses, or AP classes, or other of these, I want to put them in the category of, what do we call them? The things for the budget considerations, when we're over adequacy. That's a term you're going to hear all the time if you come to board meetings. It's, we're hammered with it, because we have a lot of things in this district that the state says, you don't need to have. Busing, right? You don't need to have, you don't have to have busing. If we didn't bus our kids, this district would be in chaos. And if you don't believe me, look at some of the schools and the way they're situated next to each other, and you have two schools, Barclaybrook and Brookside, where you have, I don't know, 1,200 students between the two schools. If parents had to bring their kids in the morning, you would have to close 522, just for parents. So it's a level of efficiency and safety and things that we do. Keep in mind, we are also, as mentioned before, we live here, we pay taxes here, and we are also committed to looking at everything that we possibly can to make this school system run as efficiently as possible. And as was articulated earlier, there is only a certain percentage of the things that we can even look at as far as targeting for consideration because of fixed costs. So just as an FYI of the things that we've been doing, because a lot of people I see are new faces and haven't been to a lot of board meetings, and we don't actually have any of the legacy videos of some of the other board meetings, so, you know, this isn't, just so you know.
You've been talking about cuts to the budget, and I just want to give you an idea of what has been cut from the budget in the past two years, and it probably will go into this year. The removal of 71 out of 89 portable classrooms, all late runs except for the basic skills and tag, zero period transportation, SLD Paris, five bus runs have been consolidated, the keyboarding position and benefits, general education Paris, we've cut 10 of them, energy rate reductions, new Monroe Township Middle School teachers and benefits, we've cut staff out of the budget, health insurance claims reduction, mechanic and benefits, Saturday academy, custodial staff, we've cut six positions, permanent substitutes plus...
permanent substitutes plus benefits, we've cut that out, pensionable substitutes, staff development, and this, this equals over three million dollars. We've also had district, uh, cost savings initiatives, um, which includes insurance opt-out, insurance carrier change, which has lowered our, our insurance, refunding the two-thousand-and-two series bonds, interest savings over the life of the bonds, and also the refunding the two-thousand-and-three series bonds. We are entered into a purchasing consortium that will save us money on all district supplies. The Applegarth asbestos remediation, by not doing it in the summer and doing it last winter, um, we saved our district money. The Brookside Roof Asphalt Instead of Budgeted Metal has saved us money. The application of high school bond surplus against taxes. The ACES Energy Consortium, transportation jointures, where we join with other districts to save money on transportation. Voice-over IP savings from Verizon, a sidebar for two less expensive health plans that we negotiated with our bargaining units, grant tuition reallocation instead of salaries, banking RFP and change of primary relationship, autistic and Down Syndrome in-house program instead of sending our children out of district, and renegotiated health insurance rates, and this equals nine million, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And it's almost thirteen million dollars of cuts and savings that we have implemented in our budget the last two years. And we are trying to do the same thing this year with looking at our programs, looking where we have, both Dr. Hamilton and Dr. Gorman and Mr. Gorsky do an excellent job of, of seeing where we can cut our, our, our budget and still add two-hundred-and-fifty students to our district every single year. In, I think, ten years, we've added twenty-two-hundred students to our district. That, that's a, a big cost.
My name is Joe Castelucci. I wanted to talk, uh, just mention one thing about revenue. Um, my time can't be up already. The, the interesting thing, the numbers that you were talking about, that's about ten percent of the budget, nine million dollars, something like that?
Thirteen million dollars.
Thirteen, okay. Because, because in the same period of time, our taxes have gone up between twenty and forty percent, just so you know. So, ten percent of the budget, twenty to forty percent have gone to the taxpayers. And we have been coming to meetings, sir, I'm not sure what your name is, but we have been coming to meetings and, you know, I spent ten years on the zoning board, been in township thirty-five years, I've been paying attention, but again, you were all elected to do the job, not me. I just have to go to work every day and pay for the taxes that we keep getting increases on. But on another point, I would like somebody from the finance committee or, or whatever ad hoc committee you put together to look at revenues. Uh, we had talked about it with Mr. Gorsky, uh, one time. What about outsourcing some of the things to bring in revenues? Some of the things might be small, uh, as far as maybe uniforms that the children get, perhaps that could be, uh, a form of advertising that some private individuals might do. Uh, we talked about the possibility of putting signs on buses. I know that we talked about a safety issue, but again, I, I don't think that was that clear because if you look at buses and cabs in New York City, there are plenty of advertising, and that's another way to bring in revenue. The, the, the point I'm trying to make is maybe not these specific ones, but why aren't we looking at ways that we could bring revenue into town, uh, revenue into the school system that would bring funds in that could meet these demands and not necessarily have to go back to the taxpayers? And I, and that's one thing I never very, I never ever hear about, how to bring revenue in and the different ways we could do it. For instance, if you're outsourcing where you get toilet paper or where you get, you know, other supplies from, that could be a bidding process. Matter of fact, the city of New York is doing that right now, and it's probably one of the reasons why they have a strike going on because they're outsourcing or, or putting a bidding out for, uh, handicapped, uh, children and, and those buses and how much that might cost. See, these are types of things that, there, there are two sides to all these accounting equations, and although we talk about two-hundred-and-twenty-five kids and we know that next year there's going to be more kids, and, you know, people keep coming into the town, or hopefully they will, uh, but we, we should be looking or at least have you take a look at how we can get revenue that could offset some of the taxes.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Please come. Thank you.
Mary Ann Lester, forty-four Avenue Y. Um, first was, how much in legal fees have we accumulated today concerning the Jamesburg tuition situation? Because I believe this has gone back as far as two thousand and eleven. And also, at the October board meeting, you said you'd had like a list of one-hundred-and-twenty-four, uh, like, capital projects, some you were going to bring forward, some you weren't, but it was estimated it cost, uh, eight million dollars. And under that, it said that the district may be eligible for state debt service or EDA grant funds for those projects in the amount of, it looks like almost two million dollars. Did that ever go anywhere? And last, on teachers' contracts, um, how much in pension liabilities do we have for teachers' accumulated vacation and sick time? Because, you know, accumulated vacation and sick time towards pension does not even exist in the private sector.
Mr. Gorsky, do you have any of those answers with you?
Would you mind repeating the first question?
Oh, the first one, just how much have we accumulated in legal fees for Jamesburg? I know the, all the way back to two thousand and eleven when they were discussing, um, tuition fees plus the, uh, what do you call it? The, um, what am I trying to say? Thank you. On that, it went back to all the way back to two, that they were playing phone tag and everything, so there must have been legal fees going back as far as two thousand and eleven. So, I was just wondering to date, how much have we spent?
I'd have to do an analysis on the billing in order to compile that information because it's not segregated in the accounting system for the particular cause that the legal, uh, time was incurred. But if you want to fill out an Oprah request form, I'd be happy to compile that information for you.
Oh, come on, you tell me that every time.
All you have to do is come in the office and put your request in writing, and that's all. And then I'll give it for you. Um, number two.
That was the, the capital projects? It was like most eight million? You said we might get some two million in funding? It was right below that. Did we ever get that? Or where did that go?
The, the way that works, and I explained this, uh, previously, the long-range facility plan requires that you project your five-year capital projects that are needed throughout the district.
Right.
Uh, it helps districts organize what they need so that they're not overrun by projects that they never planned for.
Right.
Um, included in that, you have to estimate what the cost of the projects are and the estimated state share of aid that you would receive based upon those projects. Um, the ones that have been addressed, we have received state aid on.
The roofing project?
The roofing pro, we have received state aid on the construction of this school. We have received, uh, debt service aid on prior roofing projects. Right now, I want to inform you that the state of New Jersey is not approving any aid for any school projects. The valve is closed and there is no aid being provided.
So, there's no two million coming in?
If, well, yes, that's correct. And if you're told that you want to budget for projects, the state's directive is to pick it up on your own.
Okay. And the last is about pension liabilities for teachers' accumulated vacation and sick time because I, I don't know if they're, I assume they have that because, because, um, the governor's trying to do away with that at the state level. So, um, accumulated vacation and sick time towards pension doesn't even exist in the private sector. Is that in the teachers' unions' contracts?
It is in every bargaining group's contract, and that figure is estimated and disclosed in the annual comprehensive financial report in the government-wide, um, financial statement.
And that would be what figure?
I don't know offhand. I don't know offhand.
Can you get me that for the next meeting?
Yes.
The liability of that?
Yes. And keep in mind, that liability that's disclosed in the CAFR is a snapshot as of last June thirty. If everybody in the district was to pack it in, what that liability would be, it's an unrealistic number because that's not going to happen.
But don't you have to, um, put aside a certain amount per year towards that? And suppose that did happen?
Oh, we do.
Like, if you had to put, don't you have to put a certain amount per year?
Yes, to that question, uh, we do put aside a certain amount every year in an account called Other Employee Benefits, and it does estimate the amount that's going to come due in the next year, and we do budget for that.
And what was it for last year then? That figure?
I could tell you what we spent last year.
You should give him two squares.
About one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone, is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing no one, we will close public forum. Our next scheduled Public Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, seven o'clock PM at the high school. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You did that on purpose.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Chiarella? Did you, did you, who made the motion?
Ira?
You made the motion? And Mr. Masters? Uh, meeting adjourned. Ira, I'm-